Good evening, everybody. It's 6:30 in Reedfield, Maine, in 2020. Yay!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the first meeting of 2020. Of course, this is really kind of midpoint in our fiscal year, but as far as it being a new year, happy new year to everyone. So we'll start with the minutes of December 9th and 19th, 2019, and we'll take them each in order. So starting with December 9th, were there any adjustments to those minutes or clarifications?
I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 9th, 2019.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of December 9th. That's right, 2019. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Thank you.
Dennis says yes.
And we'll move on to December 19th, which was an executive session, so it's a very brief. Are there any corrections or clarifications in regards to that meeting?
I would make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for December 19th, 2019.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to warrants. The floor is yours.
Is that true, or do we have December carryover?
No, I wasn't looking at it. I think everything is Dennis, right? Or do we have some carryover?
We had a little bit of a carryover. I wasn't sure who to have do it, so we had Ralph look at it a little bit and we had Dennis look at it a little bit.
Okay.
We got a little duplication here, but I do have the warrant here as well as copies for the board of the most recent.
Is that the 29 and 30?
That's 29 and 30.
This must be one of you.
My sense is that I have a responsibility for 27 and 28?
Yeah, the one that was reviewed just today and will be approved tonight.
So let's start with 27 and 28. So yeah, the select board reviewer was Ralph, you know? So Ralph, your...
Yippee! Man, good on him. Incoming. Yeah. First, I checked with Eric about a technicality in terms of what constituted 27 and 28, looking at the check ledger, because the check ledger had them all as 27, and I believe that majority of them belonged in 28. Warrant 27, to my knowledge, should be $13,878.26, which is payroll.
Okay.
And if there is an agreement that that is indeed the fact, then I would move acceptance of that warrant as a payroll warrant only.
Okay, and in our packet that's listed is 28, but you're saying that that should be 27?
I think it should be 27.
Okay.
And is...
I think the boss man agrees with me.
And is...
We skipped one somehow in the process.
Okay, so is the $26,000 warrant, is that...
The $26,000 warrant, which is vendors...
Is 28.
Should be warrant 28.
Okay, so they're just flipped?
They're just flipped, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve warrant 27 for payroll in the amount of $13,878.06.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrant 27, $13,878.06, a payroll warrant. Is there any discussion or questions on that warrant? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to 20...
On to number 28, which is the vendor warrant in the amount of $26,568.33. Just for highlights, there's an item for $1,510 for window treatments for the library, which raised my eyebrows, but the fact is that that's covered by a grant, and these are also energy-efficient treatments, so that's probably a good thing. We have another big-ticket guys, $10,0202, which is health insurance, which is, I guess, an annual or bi... I mean, a monthly occurrence. We have another salt expenditure, people are keeping track, for $1,0684.28. And we have a legal bill of $2,600, which I believe is to cover our issues with Mr. Guitar. In the total amount...
Half of it was for that. The other half was for an employee issue.
Correct, okay.
I remember reading that one, and I'll thank you, Eric, for having pretty flirty...
They segregated them.
Segregate those and list them.
They itemized them for us.
Because we requested that, so it was much easier to track and so the public could see what was going on, so I really appreciate that. Thank you, Ralph.
So it's a better result for everybody.
An aggregate encumbrance of $2,600 bucks, which is two ongoing issues that will soon be resolved, I trust. So the total amount is $26,568.33, and I would move acceptance of that amount for warrant 28.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrant 28 in the amount of $22,568.33. Is there any discussion or further questions on the warrant which was explained?
I just want to say thanks to Ralph for doing this last quarter or session.
I don't need any thanks. This got me out of the house. But thank you for the kind words.
All in favor? Thank you.
And now it's your turn, Chris.
And now we'll move on to...
I'm available if you get caught short.
You got it, absolutely.
Right down the road.
I appreciate it.
Warrants 29 and 30.
You got it. Okay, so these are... The payroll, it was 15, and I believe that that is 29. Is that correct, Eric?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Wait, nope, nope, 30.
That's 30.
It's 30.
So payroll is 30?
Well, no.
That's just something I want to double-check.
Yes, warrant 29 and 30.
Does I notice...
It's listed as 30, but based on what we just did...
I think our numbers are a little off.
So warrant 29 is, in fact, the accounts payable.
Right. So warrant 29 is the accounts payable, which is on the back.
So that is correct.
Okay.
This one we did get correct.
Okay, all right, just making sure. Thank you, sir. So then 29 and 30 then would be our payroll. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. So if you look on the back, this is warrant 29, and there are some sort of outstanding things that sort of say big hitters are big ticket. Barry Talbot Royer is the audit service, and that was a $4,000 expenditure. I just want to point out, item 31, it's $554.92. That is a monthly expense for streetlights, and that's $6,600 per year, and that's something that I think is an interesting discussion as we move into a solar sort of LED situation. I would love to open that up, but that's just to point out for everyone. Cushing Construction is road things, $1,500 for the rec department, I believe that was basketball uniforms. If you look to the Humane Society, that's our service contract agreement. Any kind of like dog issue, animal issue is made through them. Maine Municipal... Excuse me, MMA Insurance Workman's Comp, that was a big item there. Salt expenditure for $3,000, biggest thing, school unit payment, $300,000, and...
$309,000.
$309,000, excuse me, $199, but who's counting? And that was our warrant 29, and I'll answer any questions for you.
Yeah, why don't you move 29 and 30 together? I think that's normally what we do.
That sounds good. And yes, great, super, and that's it.
So I'll make a motion to approve warrants 29 and 30 in the total amount of $371,650.42.
That's $387.
Sorry, that was prepaid. I'd like to move warrants 29 and 30 in the total amount of $387,323.97.
I'd be happy to second that with... Also like to point out that the item for the auditor per our contract is almost paid up.
And the work is almost done.
Oh, amazing.
Isn't that amazing?
Okay, well, we'll go ahead with the motion and then any further discussion. So it's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 29 and 30 in the amount of $387,323.97. Any discussion, questions, or comments?
Thank you.
All in favor? Thank you.
I keep a recycling pile going over here for Eric if anybody wants to add to it.
We'll need to circulate some of these to sign, all right?
Oh, I just meant the photo.
Okay, great. We'll move on to select board communications. Any members of the select board who would like to say anything?
I'll say something.
Yes, please.
My mother was tickled to death with the plaque that you guys sent over.
Well, that's great.
Yep, she's got it hanging on her wall.
Great, excellent.
That is awesome. She didn't really die, though. Nope, okay.
We have a few extras for the next...
Hopefully she keeps that thing for a long, long time.
Yeah, I hope she doesn't give it up right off.
Yeah, that's the goal here.
Do you want to go ahead?
Nope, you go ahead.
I just want to say a couple things as we sort of start the new year, and there's a lot of stuff that I sort of look into the future. The first thing is that I am hoping to be back on the board this next session, so I'm hoping that that's something that we can continue to do, because I feel like here in my third year, I'm just starting to learn more. So I just want to say that now, because I'm sort of... There's a purpose to that. The other thing I want to say is, starting in February, which is soon, we will be six months away from Heritage Days. And I just... I'm very excited about it this year, because we wanted to listen to feedback that we got from folks that we asked for. We wanted people to let us know some things that they wanted to see improved. We are listening to that. We are trying to take that feedback and create an even better experience. I just want to say on the record and to everyone listening or watching at home, that the best way that you can support that is to stay involved. I'm going to be sending out a thing in the messenger for February. Hopefully folks will take a look at that and just calling out about some things and ideas that we're having for Heritage Days. There's a lot of great things about this town that I love, and it's always great when we have a day-long celebration. Really, it's a weekend. It's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but it's just a great time for the town to come together in the most beautiful part of the year in what I think is one of the most beautiful places. So that's coming up as well. And I just want to say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I was... Yes, please. I was looking at the calendar and we had... Excuse me. We talked about maybe having a workshop in October to discuss the parks, which was one of our items that we were thinking of working on, and we did not have that, and I didn't know where we are at with that. I know at the end of our agenda tonight, we're going to also discuss plans moving forward, so maybe that could be included in that.
I've made a note of it.
Thank you. And I'd also like to say that snow removal has been really well done. I was absolutely impressed the last time we had an actual snowstorm. And I went to the transfer station. It was spotless. Both employees who were there were out with a shovel and with brooms, keeping things cleared for people who were coming and going. That was new and different and really appreciated.
Great.
Me, next?
Sure.
I don't want to... I'm a junior member, so I'll go last.
We don't do that.
There's no hazing. There's no...
It's... The chair recognizes somebody and that's it.
Go ahead.
First of all, I don't think Heritage Days would be as successful as it has been without Dennis, so just to my mind, he is Heritage Days. Other people deserve a lot of credit, but this guy takes the point. I don't know whether any of you pay a lot of attention to the Municipal Association magazine, but in the legislative agenda for the short sessions that's coming up, there were a couple of things that pirk my interest that I have not been able to get a lot of additional information about. One of them is reval, and the other is how school surpluses are going to be treated. And both of them could be problematic if they go the wrong way for small towns. I'm sure David has his finger on the pulse for what's going on with revaluation, but whenever the state sticks its finger into the reval pie, to my mind, small towns suffer and a lot of times create make-work for not a lot of equity on either side of the equation. And school surpluses, I have to confess, I am not up to speed on what they are allowed to carry if they don't spend everything that we send them.
They carry it.
There ought to be a limit, and that's what I want to say then. If they can carry it forward without imprinting a designated use, I think that's wrong. I think that they should be allowed to carry some amount forward, but it should have a percentage attached to it, and the balance should be returned to the towns to be weighed against their obligations for the upcoming fiscal year. I know that's how other states work. I'm from away, frankly admit it, that's how it works in other states, but I don't think they should get a free ride if they've got an exorbitant amount of money that they're sitting on, that they should be allowed to keep it all.
Well, keep an eye on those bills and let us know...
It's very nebulous. There is no language on the...
Yeah, usually, and that's always something that's quite interesting, is sometimes even a bill titled before it's printed...
Yes, indeed.
Can almost have nothing to do with what the people do to dive with.
And the language is just so obscure, it means nothing, and then all of a sudden you find out that in a budget implementer bill at the end of the session, bad things have happened to you.
I do know if you tell our state rep or state senator that she would like a copy of those bills when they're printed, that they will be happy to do that. Okay, anything else? Anybody else? Okay, great. Let's move on to staff reports.
All right, I'll start off with my town manager's report.
Now, that was not posted, correct?
It was recently, but I have paper copies.
Oh, pity.
To make up for that.
Let's see how your arm's working.
Here, you take...
We can just pass them around.
What, you afraid of a paper copy?
No, I got the inter... Electron.
I'll start with maintenance and infrastructure, and we're getting very near the end of the Morena Hook Lake Outlet Dam process. The physical work is done. All we have left now is the installation of the final control modules, staff training, and then some cleanup in the spring that includes seeding and loaming and planting of a few shrubs. So that's really just about done, and I expect it will be less the spring cleanup work by the end of February, so...
Who staffs the maintenance?
Well, that's a discussion we've had with the town of Winthrop and with the Winthrop... Not the Winthrop, with the Cobasie Watershed District. Right now, we're working under the assumption that primary responsibility will fall to the Town of Winthrop Public Works Department, because they're there and they also have to manage the gate and outflow further downstream.
Yep.
So we'll be working with them, but we will have Town of Reedfield staff trained to manage that dam in the event that they're not able to respond, as will Cobasie Watershed District. So we're going to have a three-party arrangement that'll allow us to make sure that always has the proper level and proper control, so...
And it's the Winthrop Town Manager who's the lead person on that, correct?
Jeff Cobruck is the lead administrator. The foreman of their Public Works Department would be the primary for the actual dam operation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there protocols for drawdowns and all the rest of that that are in place?
I don't believe there are protocols, but they have target levels. Cobasie Watershed sets target levels, and they're very good about interfacing with Winthrop and the Town of Reedfield to make sure that those are met if possible. So yeah, there's no schedule.
It's working.
It's working, and they have target levels that are a little bit fuzzy. The library roof and fire station project is progressing well. We had a great turnout at the pre-bid meeting in December. We had six separate contractors show up, as well as a seventh come in after for a review. So we expect that when we do have the bids come in, that we will be getting four to five quality bids, and we've had a lot of questions on this project, and that, to me, shows that we have a lot of interest, and people are looking closely at the plans, which is reassuring from a cost perspective, when they want to know, do you really want a 30-millimeter vapor barrier when you can... Most practices call for 15. That's the type of stuff that we've been getting, and it's been very helpful. The unfortunate thing with that is that it has resulted in a couple of addenda, and so we had originally scheduled the bid opening for this Thursday at 2:00 p.m. The engineers emailed me this afternoon and said, "We're doing the final addenda tomorrow morning. We'd like to give some more time for them to put this together." So 99% certain we'll be extending that to next Thursday at 2:00 p.m. So just a week off. It does push the likely review date. If the bids are clean and there's no real review necessary, then we could potentially have a preferred bidder on the 21st of January. However, I think it'd be more likely that we would move to the February 3rd meeting. Still gives us time to prepare and get our information in to the municipal bond bank for February 12th, which is when that package is due. So that's just a little bit about that timeline while we're on that point.
In terms of legal advertising pushing the bid opening date back, do we have to do any noticing? Are we in any kind of difficulty there?
I don't believe so. As long as, I mean, our real responsibility is to notify the plan holders. I don't believe we have any, you know, circulation and a major newspaper type of requirements. I'll look at that a little bit more closely, but we've never been in that situation before, so... Moving on, the Plains Road, this is exciting news, has been identified by the road committee and town staff as the next road to be paved. It's not the oldest road, but it's the one that we believe would be most benefited from an inch or so of asphalt. We thought Church Road was in the running, but that one, we're hoping we will have the opportunity to combine with a sidewalk project the following fiscal year or the one after, but we will not know about that award until sometime this month or next.
Is it the whole road, Plains Road?
The whole road, top to bottom.
Gotcha.
Yep, that would be a little bit more expensive than South Road, I think, but certainly approachable.
Could you expand just in one or two sentences on the sidewalk, knowing something in the next month or two?
Sure, yeah. We have applied for the last three years, this is, I think, the third year we had applied, for federal funds that are distributed through the main Department of Transportation to install pedestrian improvements. The sidewalk was our project that we chose. Excuse me, and the notice of award is in January of each year typically. The last two years, we hadn't had the scoring that was necessary to match up with the funds that were available. We believe that this year we have a much better chance, because there was a new batch of money released, and our score has been increasing every year. We've been reviewing and really trying to pull every last point we can out of that system, meeting with staff and everything. So what we're looking at is a sidewalk extension from the current sidewalk that runs along 17 for about a mile, but teeing off and going from Route 17, Main Street, up to the fairgrounds, which is a very heavily-traveled route pedestrian-wise already, and we'd like to make that safer. So the project is to pursue that direction. Early phases, very, very broad view. We don't even know necessarily which side of the road it would be on yet, but that's something we would be pushing forward quickly, once we find out if we have the funds available.
Okay, thank you.
The road committee and staff also were busy just before the holidays. We went for a road trip site visit to Fayette and Wayne to look at their salt sand storage structures, both of which are Quonset hut-style with the dome with the concrete knee walls. When we had put our repair work for the current salt sand building out to bid, it came in very high, so we were looking at replacement as an option. And actually, what we have for initial estimates is that replacing wouldn't likely cost that much more than repair, and so outside demolition costs, but we have to, you know, we can work on that. But in any event, we're pursuing the replacement option as an alternative to the repair. Winter maintenance is ongoing. Thank you for your positive feedback. We've had positive feedback and we've had negative, but as you know, it's hard to get everything right all the time in, you know, 30 miles of roadway, so we'll keep working on that. And every time we have a complaint come in, I do talk to John Cushing about it, and we have a discussion, and there's usually a change in operation or at least an explanation of why things are happening. One I want to point out is sometimes with narrow roads, the truck doesn't necessarily come down both lanes and put sand both directions, because that results in a lot of sand being overlapped or sand being blown out into the ditches. So with a narrow road oftentimes, like Lakeview, for example, they might just go down the center with their sanding truck and not double up both lanes. So in the past, people have said, "Well, you know, you don't..." They come by one direction, they don't come back into the other side. Typically, the reason for that is that we're trying to conserve materials and, well, I mean, not really conserve them, just keep them under the ditch, at least for a little while. But questions like that do come up, and we try to answer those. Moving on to the transfer station, the attendant building is fully functional and in use, and it's ready. Huzzah!
Excuse me, yes, I was waiting for that?
Huzzah, Dennis?
Huzzah!
Huzzah! Thank you, sir.
I didn't get a huzzah in it, guys.
The staff will take some time to get used to it and find out how to make it work best with the operation, but it's there. We tried it out for a couple days just after the new year, and we're going to continue to...
Which was hard to do.
Which was hard to do with the next point, which was that we had a tremendous amount of traffic and volume of waste come through. We had 400 Christmas... After Christmas, we had about 400 cars come through before noon. It was staggering.
It was insane.
People had 15 minutes waits. I mean, we've never seen this before, and the building was, I mean, the building was not even... We couldn't even look at it to use it.
It was there, but nobody was in it.
We had one staff person pretty much pushing the compact button between the solid waste and the recycling constantly to keep up with the flow. The weather was a factor. That Friday being a washout, nobody came. Everybody came Saturday, and that really put us in an overflow situation. So we had to adapt, and unfortunately, we actually had to close for a couple hours at the end of the day. Certainly some lessons learned there, looking ahead. We already know next year Christmas is on a Friday. That Saturday, we're going to have extra cans and extra staff and be prepared to address that. We will also have, hopefully, a backhoe operating, which was another factor in this.
Sounds like a perfect storm.
Perfect storm of sorts, but I want to thank the public for their patience with that situation. It was messy. We almost had to close down again this Saturday, but we were able to swap out some cans and keep things going, so... Yeah, that was a challenge. But last thing with the transfer station, we are working on cleaning up some hazardous waste that had been scrolled away in the oil building over the past several months to a year. It happens, people bring in things they shouldn't. Transmission fluid, different Rainax cleaners, things get dropped off that really shouldn't be there.
At least they're segregated, so they don't end up in that place.
They're segregated in other ways, but we need to keep cleaning that up. One thing I didn't put here is that the lamp recycling program is now fully functional. We got our first order of cardboard tubes, so we can now ship directly out to the vendor. And I want to thank Paula Clark for her effort to expedite that process. It had been months, and Paula gave me a call and said, "I talked to them," and then within like four hours, we were set up. So it was something else, so thank you, Paula. Also, moving on to the administration and personnel, we had a staff meeting on the 19th. It was some training, but really the focus was on staff development. We did things like talking about personal finances. We did things like talking about personal finances, ways to help support the staff in ways that are not necessarily directly related to the workplace, but could help with the work environment. We had a tremendous, where am I? I just skipped a bullet.
Bicentennial.
Oh, there we go. Bicentennial grants. We are applying for a number of grants for the bicentennial program. They need to be coordinated. We're trying our best to do that. Some people want to take pieces. I'm very much hoping to bring everything together and have a coordinated grant application. Likely, we will have something for the board to review on the meeting on the 21st. And that would be to get approval to move forward and proceed. One of the things I noticed in reviewing this was that our grant policy was really inaccessible. It was in the vault, and it's also not quite consistent with what we currently have for practices. Doesn't mean that what's in there is wrong, it just means that there's a disconnect. So I would like to add that to our list of policies to review in the next six months to a year. Not pressing, but definitely needs to be looked at. It hadn't been updated since 2003. The age-friendly committee is working on a community supper for March 14th. This is also in connection with the bicentennial. It's very exciting. They've already arranged for a speaker from the bicentennial committee and are working to get other speakers to attend that, but also some of their other sessions they're working on. So I want to thank the committee for that work. We have completed our conversion to the Trio Sequel version, which really is, it's a backend change, not much happening on the frontend, but we may occasionally have a need to slow down and merge accounts at the front desk, so if that happens, I hope people can be patient with it. But we're working to clean that as much as we can. And finally, with my report, we have announcements. Dog rabies vaccinations are on January 15th. This is a chance to get your dog vaccinated if you haven't already. The fee is the same as it would be at a veterinary clinic, but we just try to make it convenient for you to do it after hours here at the town office. Pre-registration is required, and thank you for doing that, because it does make it easier. They bring just a few more shots than what they need on the night of the clinic, so pre-register to ensure you get your treatment for your dog. Any questions? Sorry, that was long.
Just thorough, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to boards, committees, commissions, and departments, I want to thank the Board of Appeals for their amendments of January 10, 2019, and their decision on December 4, 2019, which I noted they were making a recommendation to the planning board, so I'm assuming that somehow gets communicated to the planning board.
Yes.
Okay. And then the cemetery committee meetings for November 20, 2019, so thank you to those boards and committees. Public communication? David?
Yes, thank you. I have three items I'd like to call your attention to and see if you agree that there's something we all should work on. The first one is the development of a contingency procedure by town leadership to be well-prepared should a historical asset come up for rescue, in need of rescue. Would we have the necessary team of volunteers with expertise in property transfer and so forth? That's one item, the first item. The second one is, I urge you to come back to elderly and low-income housing needs in town, because some of the data that we all got comfortable with from the survey of the elderly is, I believe, flawed. And the third point is with regard to your scheduled February committee leaders' meeting.
Yes.
Tremendous idea, obviously, but the memo that I think you sent out already...
That's a copy of a previous memo.
Of what?
That's a copy of a previous memo. I haven't sent out a memo yet.
Oh.
It's for reference. Oh, jeez.
It's a memo that was sent, it was a memo that was sent last...
How timely my point then.
Yeah, it was a memo that was sent last year.
Because, Bruce, you and I served on school boards in the 90s, and we were so administrative, you know, the words instructional method and curriculum design didn't even pass our lips, because we were so administrative. The principal and the superintendent could have had the board sit on the sidelines and go through the agenda. So much has happened since then with the development of much more sophisticated management and leadership approaches. And so, I'll start with this idea of this memo. I would hope and pray that you would beef up that memo to, one, assign homework of every committee leader reviewing the current 2009 comprehensive plan, because Canadians have it right. They call comprehensive plans strategic plans, and it really is such, and it deserves that. And I hope then that you would ask them to come prepared to address any unaddressed, open, unfinished, major goals on the basis of what their committee can do. First point, then, I raised is the contingency procedure. I was talking with Dale Potter-Clark today, and she told me, blew me away, 150 18th and 19th century buildings in the township. Did you have, maybe you knew that, 150? And that is, I think, one of the most important values, not values, not the right word, but the most important values of our community. And I understand that some one or more of you worked with the Saunders-Rossmann family on trying to work with the...
Yep.
That came up very quickly, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, so is that written up, documented someplace in town minutes?
No.
Who, just briefly, who was on the team?
I looked at it.
I looked at it, Eric.
John Parent looked at it.
Les Priest also had, was a...
Yeah, yeah, and you met with the Rossmann and Saunders family?
Not with the family.
We met with the management in place there, who were in communication with the family, the ownership.
Okay, so...
Because it wasn't owned by Saunders, any family at that point. It's owned by a Midwest company.
A corp, yeah.
I understand. But thanks for that perspective, because I'm going to come back to that with you, because I think the town can have a much stronger preparedness should something else come up. And let me just leave you with this case study. If you've driven past the Jesse Lee Church, which is one of two important historical assets that the 1993 comprehensive plan names specifically to be protected, you'll see that it's in bad need of paint, and it's so bad that there's rotting of wood. Now, I would not be surprised, and I hope you would not either, in that you'd be prepared should the Reedfield Methodist Church come to you, or someone else in town, turn to someone and say, "We can no longer sustain this. We want to keep access to it, but we need help from some of the experts we know we have in town, who are expert in property transfer easements and so forth." So I urge you to get serious about an off-the, on-the-shelf kind of contingency plan. And finally, the, you know, I came before you all several weeks or months ago and expressed great concern about the elderly and low-income housing potential need in this community. And Bruce, you were very sincere in your concern. I had only heard from somebody at the 80% figure that the survey responses registered as a need elderly, affordable elderly housing. So I left with that, and I was still just dumbfounded, 30 years of this being a town goal, and concern is the best we can do. So I went back to the age-friendly committee's own reports, and you need to take a look at that. They say that we only got a 1 in 12 response rate. That's 8%. 8%. Secondly, we know that today, we live in 100-year disparity in income in America. We know that the average social security payment is only $1,600. So how many of our residents are trying to make it on less than that? Also, I know, Eric, you administer wonderful programs about property tax relief and general assistance and so forth, but somebody recently wrote that we have, in this environment that I just described, we have people homeless, in effect, in their houses. In accounting, we had this term, living off the depreciation, because they don't have the cash with which to maintain, and so they're living off this non-cash deterioration of their property. So lastly, I made some notes in preparation to come to you with those things, and I still couldn't get my mind around how in 30 years, my good friends and neighbors who've served before you on this board couldn't get something done. So I went back to those reports again, Bruce, and I looked at the very end of these multiple-page, multi-page copies of the survey. There's a listing of 97% of the people who responded. Bruce, it's like the 5 percenters of Reedfield. We've got to do better. Now, I may be off-base here, but let me ask you to put that on agenda, bring me back, because I've got some more ideas about how we can tackle this and really do something much better than what we were talking about, okay?
Thank you.
Three points. My alarm hasn't gone off. Maybe I didn't hit the button. I didn't hit the button.
You didn't hit the button.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for listening, and I look forward to working with you, because you can tell I've got a lot of ideas.
Yes. No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good evening. Thank you, sir.
Night, David.
Okay, thank you. We will move on now to appointments, reappointments, and resignations. We're going to consider the appointment of Maureen Kinder to the library board of directors. She's not here. She has fulfilled the role previously as librarian, so we didn't see any need for her to come tonight, since we're all familiar with her.
I would make a motion to appoint Maureen Kinder to the library board of trustees for a term beginning tonight and going through 6:30 of '22.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to appoint Maureen Kinder to the library board of trustees, term ending 6:30 '22. Any discussion?
Thank you so much, Maureen, for sticking with us, even though you have left us. It'll be like you didn't leave.
I agree. I agree. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. And we'll move on to old business. And in old business, we did have our review of our town manager, Eric Dyer. I want to announce that was an extremely positive review. We're very pleased with Mr. Dyer's performance, his leadership in the town, his caring and looking out for all the residents and the wider community, and partnerships with others. We use a 360-degree review process, which takes into account some public feedback, of course, the board's oversight, feedback from boards and committees that actually, frankly, represent a lot of residents in town, and also some outside partners and employees, if they are willing to participate anonymously in that. Every year, we would like to get more feedback than we did the previous year, and we'll continue to strive to do that. But feedback all around was extremely positive. We have Mr. Dyer's contract to approve tonight, and I'm going to make a motion in regards to that contract. Do we have the actual contract?
Yeah, I, the contract is, the first draft is in the actual packet.
Yeah, we refined a couple of things.
Bruce had asked for some clarification, so I included the changes from that first draft there, the clean copies underneath it, and then the spreadsheet that you had asked for is behind that.
Okay.
That number is included in that.
So were there date changes made on this revision?
All, yeah, all the date changes are now appropriately made. And Mr. Dyer's base salary, instead of $62,250, shall be $63,940. And we added some language regarding automatic notice if we, automatic extension of a year if there was no notice, which really is incumbent on the board to make sure that we do our job and...
Timely.
On a timely basis. So with that in mind, I'm going to move the approval of the employment contract and agreement with, for town manager, with Eric Dyer. And the way we do this is it's a three-year rolling contract, so it begins this year and it goes forward for three years. And at next year, we would renew it for an additional year, if we continue with that kind of process. So I'm making that motion, and I'm making it in regards to saying that, you know, this is a very good performing employee of ours, so I'm going to be more pleased to do this.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Now, any discussion?
I'd just like to thank Eric as well, well, for doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
There's a lot to deal with in this small town of ours, and you do it gracefully and with a lot of pride in our town, which is truly appreciated by the entire community. I'd also like to thank all the people who participated in the review, because it does take a few minutes out of your day to do that, but it's really valuable when we pull all of that together and get a much bigger picture.
And I'd like to say that you're a very professional town manager. Everything's as right the way it's supposed to be.
Tees a drop across and eyes.
You're a nice little guy.
Yes. I believe that it's always nice when I have discussions with people in town, or in general, any kind of dealing of town business, that I trust Eric to make the choice that is not only smart, it's protective of the town's reputation, of his integrity, and of all of us as our representative. And so, to be able to know that if Eric Dyer said he did something, or if he stands behind something, that carries a great deal of weight to me, because I have not known any other town manager. So I appreciate your work and help to get me through this, and I appreciate you being in this position.
Thanks, Dennis. Appreciate that.
Me too, but to embellish, I am just hugely impressed with Eric's skill set across the board. It's not a little bit here and a lot there, it's deep across the board, and I think the town benefits hugely from his service. And I hope he feels that the contract extension is an adequate representation of our sentiments to that point. I think the town's in very good hands, and I'm looking forward to a long and fruitful relationship.
Thank you all. Really appreciate the comments. It's a privilege to serve the town of Reedfield and this board, and I'm looking forward to many more contract extensions.
Great.
So thank you all for supporting them.
We like hearing that. All in favor? Welcome. For your continuance.
Welcome back.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll now move on to...
He's got a four-cylinder side out in front of his house.
I always drive by every week.
Take it out of the ground.
That's not true.
Unless he's moving elsewhere, in town.
New business, we'll conduct a review of possible upcoming workshop and public hearing topics. So basically, just looking at the... So basically, just looking at the goals that we had for this year, the two things that really popped out that do, I think, need workshop time were the local food farms ordinance and cannabis. And we're also reminded about, you know, trying to resolve the direction in terms of parks and recreation, and I think those three items, in my mind, would be a pretty good-sized bite to try to work into the next few meetings. Typically, I've tried to do workshops separately. We haven't done a lot of them, but I think we're going to have to go into a mode where if we have a second meeting or a first meeting of the month, where there's a low agenda that we would plug in an hour for a workshop. I don't particularly like that personally, because I like to really devote time in a workshop mode, but it probably makes sense, and it's more valued, more considered of your time, too. So that's what I'm thinking out loud.
So we would have our meeting and then have the workshop?
Or, yeah.
Because if we have a workshop and nobody comes, we have to sit till an hour later to have our meeting. So if we have our meeting first?
Well, yeah, workshop, I mean, we could also have the workshop at five-thirty, for example. To me, I mean, the workshop, we don't vote on anything at a workshop.
No, it's just
So it's really a free and open discussion. So for example, let's just take the food and farms thing. We would want the public to participate and give us some interest or some information, but I would specifically want to send out letters to farmers and people who potentially have farm-size real estate that may be on the market or whatever. So I'd like to do that. So that workshop could take place an hour beforehand, or it could take place in the middle of a meeting, but, you know, let's roll up your sleeves and talk, basically.
I think what we have to do for all these workshops is have fairly large notice. I mean, just not say in a meeting we're having a workshop, we've got to promote it.
Right. And that's something that I want to make sure that we also know, and as everyone on record, but the town of Reed Field has a Facebook page, that we have a great deal of information that goes through there, and it's really a nice, in addition to the other channels that we have as well. But it's always something that if we did that, especially a workshop that we want to make, that could be an event that we could, you know, then it's really digitally easy in order to do that. So hard, we have, we have two-hundred-and-fifty-five people that follow the page, and, you know, that's, I think, you know, in terms of just trying to get it out there and let people know, but it's always nice to do that. In addition to the website is also fantastic, so knowing those sorts of things, if we do that in advance, I can help with that.
So let's talk about timing, just really briefly. So Eric, on, if one of these ordinances was to go to ballot, when would we have to have the ordinance ready?
We would want to have the warrant basically completed sixty days before the town meeting, or the ballot day.
So we should try to shoot to get ordinance ones done by
Yeah, we really have to have it done by
In the March.
Yeah, January, February, March are the three months to really make all this happen. And tiptoeing around some of the budget schedule can be a little bit challenging, but one thing we have tried to do is alternate and minimize the amount of overlap. Right now, we have just two Select Board and Budget Committee joint meetings, but we do have a number of second meetings in the month scheduled for January, February, March by the Select Board.
Does it, yeah, does anyone think the cannabis one, though, we would probably have to have a separate night for that alone?
I would think so.
Yes.
I don't think putting an hour workshop in front of a regular meeting
That's not going to do it.
Is not going to. The food and farm one, yes.
I was, I think it's hard to ask people to come for a five-thirty meeting, because a lot, people have varied work schedules.
Absolutely.
Trying to accommodate, especially in the winter, for people to get here at five-thirty, I think, is hard. And I think that asking people to wait to come until seven-thirty or eight o'clock to then start a workshop when we're done our hour, hour-and-a-half meeting is also hard. So would we consider maybe having a workshop meeting, and we could hit all three of these?
Convert one of these meetings to a workshop meeting?
Or have an extra meeting, but we just, we do parks, cannabis, and local foods, put them in whatever order you want.
I like that a lot better.
We just meet, and then
It's going to be a long day.
People can come, two hours.
Yeah, I think if we, yes, I think we can effectively navigate those three issues in that time.
I don't.
No?
I think cannabis was a standalone.
But it's not a, but I would, I would reiterate, I just want to reiterate, the cannabis discussion is about farm and whether or not that, so it's not, there's no, right, ultimately, there's no, I mean, to me, with all due respect, I think we're sort of overestimating what that will be. I think Catherine's idea is exactly right. If there was a way that we could have one meeting, I mean, with all due respect, we're asking a lot, and again, I just want to point out, twenty-twenty, that, I think, is passive, whereas a more active choice would be, let's have them all together, let's get them there, let's have, you know, from here to here, we're discussing this. If people want to leave, or if they want to show up late, that's fine, or whatever we want to do, but I do kind of like having it all one.
Why don't we, why don't we approach it with trying to put the two ordinances together? I think the parks one is really more of getting representatives from three different committees to this meeting. It's, that's, although we would want public input, that's a workshop where we really want to, we really want to work with some specific people from specific committees, and we know who they are.
And we could probably arrange that for a specific time where everyone could
Yeah, and that could be right in a meeting, and that could be like for forty-five minutes or something of that nature.
You know, I will point out, though, that we do have a number of issues that relate to parks and to recreation in the town that could feed into that. Dennis brought up with an email to me recently, the question about water access for the town of Reed Field, and there's a fair amount of question about, you know, the fairgrounds and that multi-use facility, and how that's managed and operated, you know, between the rec department, the trails, and conservation. So I think that, I mean, it could be a broader discussion about recreation and not just a meeting of that committee, but it could be both. It could be a point of contact for these various committee members, but also perhaps a place for members of the public that have a vision, or an idea, or a suggestion to present, but
I agree.
Yeah.
Maybe it needs to be twofold, meet first with the parties that we know are part of other committees.
Well, that's
And get some ideas and then open up for a public time afterwards.
I mean, that's, that one's not ordinance-driven, so we can do that one.
That's a pause.
Yeah, that's, well
Or vision, visioning, or whatever.
And it seems to me like the purpose of the rec is to bring together, rather than have three separate organizations, that we, or specifically Eric, is responsible for coordinating the communication. If each of those little groups could send a little rep and say, I'm making decisions based on this, I think it would be a lot easier, you know, to sort of coordinate what happens. Who does this, what hap? I know, just speaking on my experience, or extrapolating from what you're saying, working with Heritage Days, it would be really nice if, you know, you could make decisions, or have a group of people that can make decisions based on it, given that power. The idea of like, well, let's take that back and discuss it, you could, you could workshop it to death, and I think that's, it's just to streamline
Kind of seems where we are in a lot of ways. Some of the challenges we've had have been this kind of fragmentation and channelization of information, resources, goals, all that stuff.
Right, and it's, you know, the sandbox is Reed Field, and we're all here playing in it.
I love that, yeah.
Well, in terms of facilitating discussion, at least as far as the rec component is concerned, would it be helpful to focus the discussion if we provided an overview in terms of what it is we think the vision should be, so that these people, when they come to the table, can either agree or disagree, or bring their, I, bring their thoughts to the table that fit into that umbrella? Otherwise, we're going to have a wide-ranging discussion with random ideas that then somebody is going to have to consolidate and then go back and find a consensus. If we don't set the table, so to speak, we're going to, we're going to be spinning our wheels, I think.
I think that's what we've done for a couple of years, because we've tried to bring people together, and it hasn't really happened.
So, yeah, you bring them together, and you say, what do you think?
Yeah.
If we, if we say, these are the things that we want to accomplish, this is where we think you belong in that component, how, A, do you agree with the overview, and then B, if you do, where's your buy-in? What do you want to do to become a stakeholder?
So we, when we originally formed that committee, we did put together an ad hoc committee document. I think that maybe reviewing that would be a good place to start.
That might be the template to get it started again.
Just a place to start, yeah.
Just remind everybody what the overview
Or modify, because you're talking a little bit different, I think.
Let me get parks on the next agenda for a Select Board discussion to take a look at that document. And I see the park piece going a little bit slower in terms of, it's not the same level of immediacy. So we'll do that, and the next thing we'll do is then we'll meet, go to a workshop mode with it, but yes, lay out that vision a little bit more.
So then we need a date to do the cannabis and local foods?
That's right.
And do we want to try and do that?
And we want to prepare that very well, so I need to make sure we defer to Eric in terms of preparation time on that. And I think it is really important that we do get a lot of notice out on it.
So if we did it, is three weeks' notice enough notice?
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Because if we could get something together by the end of this week and then do it the first week in February, that would be three full weeks of notice.
And that would be our February third meeting.
Right, except we thought we would have to have a separate meeting to do cannabis and local foods.
Right, right, no, but I'm saying that, in that slot, that's what you're talking about.
Or in lieu of, or
In lieu of, or put in a second meeting in that week.
So the thirteenth is a Budget Committee meeting only, right? That's
Yes.
Yeah. So we could, we could slot a meeting in the week of the tenth.
Monday, the tenth could work, yeah.
What do people think?
Say that again?
Monday, the tenth.
Monday, the tenth. Yep, we can do that.
Are we talking six, six-thirty?
We would be talking six-thirty, I think.
Monday, February tenth.
Six-thirty to eight-thirty.
And this
And we'll take care of cannabis and food.
Yeah, and I guess what I would ask members to do is, if you have some thoughts on how to construct that agenda, to send them to Eric, or pick up the phone and talk to me, and we'll figure out how to, I mean, I think I'm pretty, I'm, I can manage putting, pulling together an agenda on that, but I want to make sure it's reflective of what we need to do.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Chris, you were working on the local foods thing, right?
Eric has a draft that, I think we can go forward with that for the
Okay, and you have some contact people. I know Deb Doten's been in dispute with us.
Deb Doten wants to be involved, and
And I don't know, she has other contacts, but that would be a great way to spread the word, so that the people who have a stake in this want to make sure that they get notified.
Yeah, I think particularly on the farm one, I think we'd actually want to send them the ordinance.
The proposed.
Not, not, yeah, not actually just say, you know, it's available online, but just send it and probably have some sort of letter from the town saying, what we're trying to accomplish, basically.
And there was a very good letter from Hickman
Yeah, that was excellent.
Yeah, that said, people are over-legislating their ordinance and taking away what we originally intended. So you want to keep it simple.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yep.
So that letter should be circulated, I think, with them, don't you, Eric?
I would include that. If we're mailing out the draft, draft language, then I'd say absolutely, yeah.
And then with the cannabis, I think we need to be very clear that what we're looking at is the growing aspect, is what we can regulate from an agricultural standpoint? Is that correct?
No, we can, we can regulate retail, right?
We also have an option to allow an opt-in for commercial sales, so it's a two-headed monster.
Okay.
And I don't, I'm not sure you can discuss one, well, you probably can, one without the other, but at some point, you're going to have to have both discussions. And whether or not you do that in one evening, I don't know. I, I think
Well, I think you open it up for both, and if it gets carried away and it's too big, then you need a second meeting.
Right, unlike the farm one, this is one where we really need to hear what the community would like to see reflected in an ordinance, because I have, I have absolutely no idea, to be honest with you.
I haven't heard anything out there about what people think one way or the other.
We've never brought it up. I mean, we've talked about bringing it up, but we've never actually had a discussion. I mean, a hundred people could show up for a meeting like that, for all I know.
Or two.
The more immediate issue is the agricultural side of it, because we're a small rural town with a lot of agricultural land, but at some point, because we have commercial property, somebody may want to sell it here. And
Every town I drive through, there's a vacant building that hasn't been used in a long time, and now it's a cannabis something.
It's a green plus sign, right?
Right. And so it's inevitable that people want to have this, because it's cropping up everywhere.
Someone's going to see it as an, as an opportunity, whether or not it will be, is based on, is based on a lot of research. I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, the local cannabis store in a town of twenty-four hundred is going to be a thriving economic success, but
Only if they're driving through to go somewhere else.
And
And if they're driven through Manchester, they've already got it.
Yeah. I will say, there's a workshop coming up, MMA Municipal Association. I think it's January fifteenth.
We just got to notice.
From three, three to five or something?
Yeah, it was an afternoon. I think it seemed very approachable, so anybody that's interested in attending that, I've been to a couple of these, and tried to get my bearings and get a grasp of all of this, but I plan on going to that one as well, just because it's another opportunity to get a refresher on, you know, the final lay of the land. Things have finally settled down, the dust is cleared. We've got a lot of towns that have already opted in, we've got a lot of towns that have considered it and not, but MMA does a great job of aggregating information, and this is one of the areas they've been very active in, so I think that we'll get good information.
I would be interested in that.
You and I can't go, because we have a solid waste meeting that night.
Maybe I'm thinking about a different date, maybe the fifteenth was the
There was an email, it came in an email.
Yeah, I'll look at that, I'll find out when that is.
Will you find out for me, Eric? I would love to. I have the fifteenth free, it turns out.
I might have to make a road trip to go to
January twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, there we go.
There we go. We can go.
We can go. Awesome, yeah.
More, more than we sampled?
No, Ralph.
That's the Tuesday from three to five, and I would like to go to that, too.
Okay.
We'll have
And that would be timely, if we're not having our meeting until the first weekend.
Let's test the capacities of the County Transportation Authority and get a bus.
I'll, anybody that's interested, send me an email, and I will register everybody that I get an email from, and then we can call or not.
Yeah, sounds good.
I want to go, I want to
Okay, all right, so I got Ralph
And Chris.
And Chris.
I cannot go.
Okay. Dennis is a maybe.
Yeah, I want in.
Okay, all right.
I already had the legal briefing.
We got three, and that's about, you know.
You're way ahead of the curve.
No, Eric and I went to a legal briefing at Party Flurry, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was good.
So, it is.
It's confusing.
Okay, great. Is there anything anybody would like to add to that discussion?
Does that hit, we're going to have the solid waste ordinance revised, but I don't think we need to do anything special about that.
Probably not.
Committee will work on it, and Eric will work on it as transportation manager.
Yep.
That was the one thing I'd like to put on that list.
But I put it on.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Okay, great. We'll move on into twenty zero fifty-nine. Eric, this is a commercial hauler license fee increase, and if you could just tell us quickly what thinking is there?
Sure, the fee is fairly modest, the level of effort can be Sure, the fee is fairly modest. The, the level of effort can be fairly high. Although Thursdays are reserved for commercial haulers. In a lot of ways, that actually makes life easier for the transfer station staff because we have folks bringing in, you know, large quantities all at once and it also is, is a way to provide a service for the residents. These fees have been the same for a very long time. I could not find when they were first set at $75, but it's been quite a long time and it, we're increasing other fees and we had increased other fees in the last two or three years, the transfer station, but this one was left alone. So, I, I just thought it was time to, to make a small increase and try to keep pace with some of the costs of, of managing that program.
And you don't, I'll just do the out of the blue question here.
Sure.
That I didn't prepare in advance. So, do they run calendar year? Is there any advantage to doing these kinds of things on a fiscal year rather than a calendar year basis, or does it really matter?
It doesn't really matter.
Because they're pretty minor, aren't they?
Yeah, I mean, my preference would probably be to have them, you know, sometime in, in, you know, renew in, in September because that's probably a quieter time of year, but it really doesn't make that much difference. It, it can help if people have their insurances on a calendar year. Not everybody does, a lot of people just have month to month, but really, it's six one, half dozen the other.
Okay.
Um, I have a question. So, e- even if they pay this hundred dollars, they could still bring as much in as they want?
This just gets them in the gate.
Yeah, this is just a, a license fee, basically.
Okay.
And yes, they can bring as much as they want, as long as it comes from residents in one of our three towns, Reef Field, Fayette, or Wayne.
Can they bring in demo material?
They can, but they have to pay for it as, as they dispose of it. So, the idea is that they would, and the agreement we sent them says, if you collect demolition material, it needs to be collected and paid for at the time of disposal at the transfer station. So, if they collect this stuff and they don't collect money for it, that's not our concern. We want to make sure we get paid when it goes in our bin.
Yeah, whatever we get.
Yeah.
Right, and they have to, there are specifications where they have to list who their customers are or how many there are, what towns they're coming from.
Recycling plans.
Because we probably don't want commercial waste from private haulers, correct?
Not necessarily. We do accept some commercial waste at the town of Reef Field and we do have some, for example, summer camps and general stores that we, their waste comes through our facility.
They're more residential than-
Well, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a-
They're not manufacturing enterprises.
Yeah, yeah, Saunders has their own stuff. It doesn't even come close to us because they, it's way more a hassle for them to, to, to bring it to our facility than it is to pay someone to haul it off. However, the ordinance does allow for commercial waste to come in in various forms, whether it's through a hauler or individually, with, with the caveat that if we have a burden, that we're allowed to assess a surcharge, which we've been strongly considering for some of the summer camps who tend to overrun us at times in the summer and at quite a cost, so.
So, how many commercial haulers do we actually have in the queue at this point? Do you have any idea?
Four?
I think it's up to six or so, but it's not very many.
So, we're not, we're not talking about a revenue stream issue here. We're just talking about keeping up with current rates so that we're not perceived as being a bargain place.
And costs of, of management. I mean, employees have had pay increases regularly over the at least 10 years that this fee has been set at this. And we're still using employee time to manage handling them, so.
With probably increased volume.
Right, probably could have been increased a long time ago.
Yeah, and it could be more. I mean, I, I didn't feel it was really necessary to say, well, we're going to up this to $500, which wouldn't be unreasonable, I don't think, but-
You don't want to bump it.
It kind of is, you know, that's an exaggeration, but I think a hundred dollars seems fair and it's, we're just trying to keep pace, so.
I'll make a motion to increase the commercial hauler permit fee to $100 per year.
Second?
Effective when?
Uh, with the-
The first contract renewal.
Which would be, which is actually going to be, you'll be getting, reviewing these on the 21st.
So, effective immediately?
Effective immediately, yeah.
Did you still second that, Chris?
I still second that.
Okay.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Thank you. Consider the purchase of a replacement backhoe for the transfer station. You had quite a, a bit in your package.
May I interrupt you for a quick moment? Who is our person in the back room?
Bill.
Bill.
Bill, it's Catherine here. Could I get an extension cord?
Oh, did you just, you just died, didn't you?
Thank you, go ahead.
She just died in her own.
Okay, so we'll move on to the backhoe. Eric, I'm just going to give you the floor on this.
Sure. So, a- as you all know, we have had issues with the backhoe. We are in the process of getting towards the end of it of investigating what caused those issues, how to prevent them in the future, what the best option is for repair or replacement. All of that work has been ongoing over the past couple of months. In your packet is a memo that summarizes all of that. The numbers presented reflect the best available information. We've actually had changes of this morning as to one of those quotes from one of our contract, potential contract providers. But I'll just back up and say that we wanted to make sure we were using the equipment the right way. It's, anytime you have something like this happen, it's an opportunity for pause and for review. We started off by looking at how many hours a year we use the backhoe. It's not a lot for a heavy piece of equipment that is very costly. Just like a lot of other small towns, it doesn't get used to its full capacity. Right now, we've averaged just about 215 hours over the past seven or eight years annually. Those are all, almost all years, actually, no, they all are years after public works, so almost exclusive use at the transfer station. And the, the numbers have been variable but fairly steady and it looks like we might be declining a little bit in the last couple of years. But average of 216 hours a year, which is, which is really minimal for a piece of equipment like this. So, it made me give a lot of thought to the best approach to repair versus replacement. The hours of use for a backhoe vary depending on how hard it's used, but the effects of time and the serviceability of a piece of equipment that's 30 years old is going to be a lot harder to get parts for, those type of considerations. So, we looked at all of that. We looked at the use that the equipment had and it, it seems as though, after that review, that we don't have really any other choice other than to purchase new piece of equipment because the capital cost that we have right now on an annual basis, it's not going down that much. You know, we're $3,000 or $4,000 a year and it's going to maybe drop a couple hundred bucks a year if we were to extend the life of that at a cost of $6,000 in repair. It just doesn't make sense. So, the assumption that I, that I made was that we would be better off with a, with a new piece of equipment and so I did request three quotes from the three major service and equipment providers in the region. And we did have the option of going out with, with a bid, but with a specialized piece of equipment like this, with the fact that we were looking for somebody that could provide the equipment and the service. There really only are the, the three or four providers in the state of Maine that could bring something in and the size of the equipment. John Deere, Caterpillar, and Case were the three that really stood out and those are the pieces of equipment that most other towns and transfer stations operate. You don't see people operating Coyotes or, what's the other one? Kubota?
Mm-hmm.
Because they just don't have that size equipment. They're, they're nice, but they're not exactly the right fit for the, for a transfer station. So, what we looked at was, we took our current piece of equipment and said, we want something like this, but a little bit less beefy. That piece of equipment was purchased originally for dual use with Public Works and the transfer station. Now, we're using it just for the transfer station. We don't need a piece of equipment that can dig eight feet into the ground or lift 3,000 pounds in the bucket. We don't, we don't need that. We need something that's a little bit less. So, we looked at the, the next model down from the current 416C backhoe, which was basically a 415F in the Caterpillar family. And then we asked the other two providers, match that. Give us something, give us your equivalent. So, we have three, three pieces of equipment that have been quoted. Caterpillar through Melton Cat, Case through Beauregard, and a Deere through Nortrak. And I think that what we have is a very good starting point and three pieces of equipment that are very similar in cost, as you can see. I, I do believe that the Deere might be a little bit more favorable because even though they didn't offer a trade-in for us, they did, the, the price is similar to the others and if we were to sell that backhoe, we could then reduce the cost of that overall transaction by 10 or 15,000 dollars. It's, I, I will note that Beauregard gave us a revised quote with 2020 pricing, which actually dropped their cost to a little bit less than 80,000 dollars. But they're all in the same range. What we haven't done yet, and I'm talking about town staff and myself, is actually go out and kick the tires and look at these pieces of equipment, see how they operate. Right now, we're calling around to other transfer stations, other towns, asking them what they use, how it works for them. And so, we'll be doing over the next couple of weeks, site visits to likely the showroom or the lot where these things are being held and also to some other towns and try them out, take a look. And that's the best way to get what we need, get the results we want. So, back to my original point about RFP, I will need to have the select board suspend the purchasing policy. Normally, a piece of equipment like this would go out to bid, but it doesn't always make sense and that's why we have some flexibility built into that policy. So, I did have a bolded list at the bottom here of things I was looking for and I guess that first bullet would be to say, I'd like to sell or trade the current backhoe. I would like to work with one of the three providers identified to finalize a quote. And that, that review by staff, I think, is the most important piece with a difference of $2,000 or $3,000 on a $100,000 piece of equipment. It's that factor, I think, that makes the most difference. We're looking at things like horsepower, the, the reach of the arm, the lifting ability, all of that, but I think it's going to come down to some of those factors, but also that, that staff review. And then the other bullet would be to utilize the backhoe reserve. We currently have $30,264 available. That, that has been set aside with the intent that it would be used to purchase a new backhoe. I think it's an entirely appropriate use of those funds. And it will support and allow for, I mean, one, one option, I'll back up, would be to pull all of this out of the shared transfer station capital reserve. But that's a little bit of a, of a, of a dodge because we've been putting this money aside with the intent that when we replace the equipment, the town of Reef Field will cover half the cost. The fact that we are essentially the operator of the facility and we have those other towns contributing, but as partners, not necessarily as owners. You can look at it a couple of different ways, but what I'm saying is-
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
As far as equity, as far as value, and as far as making sure that the transfer station has the other things that it needs, using that reserve makes all the sense in the world. So, that's, I just wanted to give some background on that.
Yeah.
The last bullet point is to access financing. We have a number of lease purchase agreements through Andersgård Bank. We got great pricing from them. I did talk to Mark Robinson from Fayette about the possibility of borrowing one of their pieces of equipment until we could get to the bond bank and do a, add this to a bond. It doesn't really make sense to take that route. So, my suggestion and hope is that we could work with Andersgård, who gave us much better pricing than what the, the dealers, the, the Beauregards of the world were able to offer for financing. So, I would be happy to take any questions on, that's Catherine's job. Take any, any questions on this process or the equipment or where we're headed.
Go, Dennis.
I think mostly this is exactly, I just want to point out exactly why we would want to renew your contract because when you say that this is the most, makes the most sense, I know you've done all the right work. So, I would move that we, do, do we have to do this in order, suspend it and then do it? Or how, what's the order?
It could be all together, I just add it as a fifth.
Can we ask a couple more questions?
Yes, oh, yeah, go for it.
And we'll let you do it, though?
No, that's okay. I don't have to. It doesn't matter.
No, that would be great.
But we have five minutes.
Let's get the questions.
We're going to have to extend the meeting.
So, I have a question on the, well, then let's do that right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want to do that, Chris?
I recommend we extend the meeting from 15 minutes to 10 after 8.
That would only be 10-minute extension.
That would be a 15-minute extension. I mean, yeah, that'd be 15 minutes.
We've scheduled a meeting till 8.
Yeah, but if we go, it's, we got 15 minutes to get this-
Right, but that clock would start at, at 8, the 15-minute extension.
Quarter after?
Yep, that sounds right.
I second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
You did it right.
On the, I'm fine with everything you have there. My question is on the amortization schedule. Why do we have a payment on either five or six-year lease due in January? Why are we borrowing money and then paying it the same month?
You save on interest. We, we could, and also, this was just a speculative date for, for this schedule.
It's a down payment, essentially.
Yeah, you can look at it a lot of different ways, but in essence, we could, we could say we're borrowing. I mean, we want to have the money available. We could have the, the payment the same, same day the money is released. We could have the payment a year ahead. I actually looked at that option, but that added about $2,000 in interest and I said, no, thanks, we don't need a six-year lease, which is what effectively we turn into. I'd like to get this out of the way. We have the funds available. But yeah, the, um, the reason for that was-
So, we would be paying the 30,000 plus the trade-in and then the 11,000 would come from our operating budget?
The, yeah, so, um-
The 11,000 loan payment, the lease payment?
Would be pulled out of the, the capital reserve for the, the transfer station. Or we could, I mean, we could do it a couple of different ways.
Okay, but it's in addition to the 30,000 that's in the backhoe reserve fund?
It would be in addition to that, yes. So, so the way to look, the way I look at it is, we have a piece of equipment that costs, say, $100,000. They'll give us our factory pricing because we're a municipality and take off 10,000. They'll take off 10,000 for trade and that gives us the 80,000 and then we've got 30,000 reserves, we're down to 50. And then we borrow that 50 and immediately make a payment out of the, the transfer station capital reserve.
We're paying interest on 40.
What's that?
We're paying interest on 40 at that point.
So, it's really more like a four-year lease, really? Just we're making the first people upfront?
Yeah, something like that. I mean, if it's a $55,000 loan and we're at 11,000 a year, yeah, it's, it's basically a four-year with the first payment, down payment. That's a good way to look at it.
Okay.
And if we don't make it then, you're going to have a couple thousand more dollars in interest.
Well, we, we could, we could defer this and say, you know, hey, we'll take the money. We're not going to have to pay anything until January of 2020 or January of 2021. That, you know, that, that's kind of a, not as a desirable way to approach it. It would cost more money.
And you have the reserves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We good.
Eric and I have talked about this a little bit, having bought a couple of these things in another life. I prefer the short-term loan option because the savings by carrying it out another year is minuscule and would not have any, any appreciable budget impact in terms of long-term planning. The question I have is the disparity in, in list price between the three units of, and then you look at the net cost with the trade-in factored in on the CAT and I'm just wondering if the 415F CAT is actually a better machine by virtue of the fact that it costs more. And I am not that up to speed anymore on these things, but if it's a better machine and it's not overkill, then I would think that that would be, given the comparable pricing, that would probably be the way to go. Unless we can negotiate some options with the lower-priced vehicles. And one of the things I think we ought to definitely do as part of purchase price for any of these vehicles is, is put the rim guard in those, in those tires. As we talked about, the thumb and all the rest, that can be added on down the road. But that is a very, very useful piece of apparatus for these high-end machines that will help you in terms of brush and tree removal. When something's down in the middle of the road, you want that thumb. And if it's not cost prohibitive of- And if it's not cost prohibitive of, I would, I would put it on the table as part of the negotiation and...
Sure, yeah.
What is this piece called, a rim guard?
It's, it's, you wait, you tire. It used to be calcium chloride, but that was highly corrosive, and it would eat your rims. They have this new, this new material that adds weight to the tires, which is very helpful in slick conditions, even with four-wheel drive, sometimes you're not going anywhere. So that extra weight, and it's significant because it's a very, very dense liquid, now it's beet juice. And it doesn't, it doesn't eat your rims. And it's, if you don't do it, you're making a mistake. Anytime you take it off of a flat surface, or you're asking it to do something on even a slight incline and you're pushing weight, your tires are going to spin. This, this just gives you extra added value in terms of traction and torque without having to put chains on the machine. And it's not cost prohibitive at the point of purchase. You do it after the fact, then some specialty people have to come into your site, bring the material, and then, then it costs you more. So I would respectfully suggest that when we, when we pull the trigger on this, that that be, that be one of the extras that we negotiate. And, and since it's all negotiable now, maybe that gets tossed in as, as part of the deal. But again, I, I, there's, there's a significant difference between the 415 base price and all the rest of them, and I would like to know why.
I'll tell you why, I used to sell heavy trucks.
All right.
The, the trade is not worth 25,000, so they up the selling price to cover the trade.
Ah, yes, so they're, so it's the manufacturer eating it to get your business, is what it is.
Well, they're not really giving you 25,000 for the trade.
Well, and, and I wouldn't think, and, and here again, for, for convenience sake, as opposed to the town negotiating a sale price for a piece of used equipment, if we can do this as a trade with the other two vendors, that would be very helpful because there's no guarantee you're going to get $10,000 for this piece of equipment. I've seen it.
There is no guarantee.
And, and that boom, that boom is shot, the steel is crystallized, you can't weld it. So the $16,000 option would have been the only way to go with that machine.
Yeah.
You're not going to weld it without creating OSHA difficulties.
Yeah.
But...
Yeah, if I can kind of bring this to...
Yeah.
I pray you.
Yep, to completion. I think the feedback is all very valuable, but we want, what I want to vote on tonight is deferring to the manager and the staff to make the, the final choice based on their study, and obviously considering the input and expertise that you've added and that others here have, have said. I mean, I, you know, I had the same question on, on that Caterpillar, why is that a $106,000 machine?
And Chris had the answer.
Well, it's obvious our truck isn't worth 25,000, our backhoe isn't worth 25,000.
They will get that for scrap, they get more of his parts in scrap.
So with that, I, I would like a motion to be brought forward.
Dennis?
And then we can go ahead and have any discussion on that.
Is it just how, is it just to defer to Eric in terms of purchasing the new equipment?
What I would do is, I would say we're going to suspend the purchasing policy and to approve Eric moving ahead with the replacement of, of the...
Sounds good.
I would hit the four bullet points that he had there.
Yes.
Or reference them.
Or reference them.
Then I will make a motion, please, to suspend the purchase policy in this case as instructed and vetted by Eric, to give him the authority to do the following things, sell or trade the current backhoe, to work with one of the folks, probably, did you go ahead and choose the CAT?
No, no, there's no choices yet, we, we still need to finish up our review.
Gotcha, to work with one of the providers that are listed here in the packet as written, to purchase a new backhoe, to utilize the money that we have set aside specifically for this purpose, which is deemed appropriate in the amount of $30,260.40 as an initial payment, and to secure the financing for the balance through a short-term lease, or five-year lease purchase agreement.
So I want to second the motion, but I would like to ask Dennis, as you moved it, on the three providers or comparable discovered...
Yes, yes, if something else comes up, so we would reserve that.
If we have a fork and come in and just study.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. And, and we, again, that's in his...
So it's been moved and seconded. Now, do we have any discussion on that motion?
Just that I want to make sure, for, more for the sake of the public than for us, that Eric is going to have staff go and see these machines and also talk with other transfer stations prior to purchase, so that we are doing really thorough due diligence on this purchase.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, and, and I think it also needs to be said publicly, thank you Catherine, that these, these purchases are in the best interest of the future and keeping these things together. Do it now and do it right the first time. You buy quality or you buy twice.
And we're saving a minimum of $3,500 a year based on Eric's analysis.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, we're, we're ready to vote, all in favor? Thank you.
At 8:06.
Woo-hoo, all right.
So the next item on the agenda is to consider the format and timing of the annual chairs meeting. In the packet was last year's invitation to the chairs meeting. We did have some input tonight in terms of how that invitation might roll out. And, you know, I would consider that input, I'm probably not going to assign homework to these chairs.
And it may not be the chairs because we're not requiring it be the chair of community representative.
No, that's exactly right.
I, I have a couple comments, I'll keep them brief, but...
Thanks.
I think it's been, it's great to do this, I started this many years ago, and I like that it has morphed over time into a different thing, and that's great. I don't think the format has worked as well as it might because some people come with, like, nothing ready to say, and other people come with, like, 15 minutes.
Yep.
And so just saying that we're going to have a half hour to, to give a report out, I think we need to be more specific. No more than five minutes. And if you have 10 people, then that's 50 minutes, and then the hour doesn't work. So I think we need to just have a little bit more guidance.
Okay.
For what we want. It doesn't have to be five minutes, but let's not go over three minutes or five minutes, or if it's longer, come with a handout.
Yep. Catherine, since you actually initiated this when you were chair, if you, if you would know, if you would just send me a brief note with some thoughts on that, that would be very helpful. Because both as initiating it and as a current member, the wanting to get the best out of it, that would be helpful to me to, before I write this. So what would be the date of this?
Yeah, I, I just want to add something, and I'm sorry, but I think it's important to be said. I, I would like for the chairs of these committees, and, and especially, like, I, I would like to know, I'm interested to know what the purpose, what, what is their mission? What is the mission of their committee? You know, I, I'm sure it's written, I'm sure, but I would like for them to, you know, hey, I'm on the, the rec committee, and the, the mission of the rec committee is to provide, you know, high-quality local community programs that are outside and athletic. I, I just think that would be something I would enjoy to have in that meeting so that everybody can hear it. I don't know how that gets included.
I think the way that maybe that gets included is the ad hoc committee on committees that we had a couple of years ago.
Still a classic.
It is a classic, but it was a very, a very good body of work that was done by that group. They actually have the mission for every single committee.
Good.
And I think maybe what we can do is parse out that little piece of it and send that out as part of the document, the invitation document.
Is that available on the website?
It is.
It is, yeah.
Okay, I'll go searching for it. Thank you, sir.
Ralph?
We've got a comprehensive plan coming up.
Yep.
It'd be interesting if maybe these folks, if they're not aware, they'll think about it and speak to how they figure they factor into it.
Sure.
Which is going to what David was getting at.
Yep, and that's actually, I mean, we actually have to go through town meeting and approve that purchase before they get involved, but it doesn't hurt to start mentioning that.
And we have decided that we're going to put that on this year's...
We're going to put it in the budget, yeah.
Okay. We did that at our last meeting, right?
That was our intent.
We are, yeah, that's, it'll be there.
I almost started that conversation with David.
That was at the last meeting.
And then I was like, no.
To put money aside, well, not put money aside, but to actually engage in a comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I hope we start.
We had a person come from MMA who works on compliance with towns all over the state.
Yeah, great.
Actually...
And he gave us a proposal, it wasn't like written in stone, but it was semi-written in stone.
Semi-written in stone.
He sounds great to work with.
It was in soft-stick chalk.
I was going to say, yeah, I was going to say it was written in chalk, written in balsa.
Yeah, just for, just, just for clarification for the public, that was KB org.
Oh, you wanted that.
Yeah, KB cog.
KB cog, yes.
KB cog, sorry, not MMA. So, Janice, you've packed up, but Bruce is looking for a date. Is this supposed to have any sort of a focus on how their committees would be doing budget? I would say that ship has already sailed, right?
It has, we've already resold long ago.
No, that ship has sailed, this, this really, actually, the intent of this is actually not to be budget-specific, but more informative and helpful as we look forward.
Build those connections and...
Yeah, and maybe, maybe even the timing of the, maybe even the timing of the year is not exactly right, I don't know. I think we've done it at different times.
We have, yeah, it's been January to February, it's been, I think, December.
February is kind of full right now, we have four meetings.
Yeah, it's very full.
February's straight full.
So maybe March prior to the public hearing would be a good time? I mean, like, at the beginning of the month in March? We don't have a meeting the first or second week.
We have three meetings in March?
We do.
Trace, as they say.
Because one's a public hearing on the 26th.
That is correct.
And I will point...
Well, I see three select board meetings, the 4th, the 16th, and the 30th.
The 26th, I, is a...
We don't have a fourth?
March 11th, you have the joint meeting with the school committee.
Yep.
Right.
Okay, so the 4th, I'm looking at this old one, I guess. This, this one was updated then? The blue, the 4th, the 4th of March is not a meeting.
Oh, you're right, it does say select board meeting, but it's not, it's going to be on the 11th.
I think that was, yes, it's the 11th, I think that was when we were still wondering if it was going to be. I had the same thing.
Okay, okay.
So the 11th and...
So we do already have meetings in March.
Yeah, the 11th and 30th.
Just the, the February, March are heavy with budget.
So do we...
And the 16th, okay.
We could do it in April.
We could do it in April.
April?
Okay, so let's do it in April, but let's just leave the date open at this point. It's far enough out, we'll, we'll figure out the calendar.
Yep.
And it'll be crystal clear, it's not about budget, when we're already done with the budget.
Yeah.
Wait. We do have, yeah, April 13th is a select board meeting, if we wanted to turn that into...
We may be having to approve the warrant in April still?
Uh, yeah, we should, I think it'll be early April, but yeah.
I think we probably will be.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Great, could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I moved to adjourn?
All in favor?
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?